I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of Marysville today, Tuesday, April 7th at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Council Number Hudson?
Here.
Council Number Andy?
Here.
Council Number Simmons?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Biden.
Here.
And Mayor Sam Iola.
Is Nicole's mic on? When she was calling roll call, we could not, I could barely hear her. I didn't know, is her microphone on? Also, Mr. Mayor, is your microphone on?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. So we'll, um...
Just wanting to make sure everybody's mic is on.
I appreciate that. I don't, I don't believe Nicole needs to be... Well, you know, for these meetings, we will take roll call votes. So just to make sure that we have that on, on, um... On, uh, on the... Sure we, the public understands who voted on what. With that, let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand.
Ready pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda, Ms. Brown?
Yes, Mayor, tonight, agenda's items number five and number eight are being continued to the April 21st City Council meeting and will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. Are there any reports from our city attorney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
You're here. Thank you. Without, we'll move to presentations. We have a proclamation of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We have, it'll be, we'll read the proclamation, which is right here, and our own Kelly Minster will present it to, to our folks in dispatch. We proclaim, declaring the week of April 12th, April 12th through the 18th, 2020 as National Public Safety Dispatcher Week in the city of Marysville. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police or fire or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Marysville Police Dispatch Center. Public safety dispatchers are the first and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety dispatchers of the Marysville Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the safety of the community. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties in the past year. Now there be a resolve that the City Council, the city of Marysville, call upon everyone in our community to recognize and thank all of our public safety dispatchers of the city of Marysville. Thank you for all your work, folks. Thank you. And we'll make sure we get that to their folks out there. We also have a proclamation proclaiming Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that proclamation will be mailed to Casa de Esperanza. We do, I believe, have, the next item is the R E E F Sutter Abuse Energy Watch Program. I believe we have Ms. Hawk via Zoom who will be presenting.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present to you on what we have going on with the Sutter Abuse Energy Watch this year. So I believe Nicole has, I can see that it's up, so I wanted to talk to you about creating a revolving energy efficiency fund, which is our objective between now and the end of June. And Nicole, can you move to the next slide? So what is a revolving energy efficiency fund? So it is a self-implemented fund that the city would choose to put all proceeds from rebates that you might receive from energy efficiency projects that you've implemented. Rebates and savings, so all of the rebates and savings go into that fund, and that fund can pay for a variety of upcoming projects, positions, et cetera. So it is all self-elected. You choose to do it. I did do a ton of research on this, and I didn't find any municipalities as small as yours. So if you decided to create a revolving energy efficiency fund, you might be the smallest municipality to do it, so you'd be a trailblazer in that sense. But some of the things that other municipalities have paid for with their refunds are an energy efficiency officer or green team staff members, electrifying their fleet. Also, energy equipment upgrades and also reducing their dependence on traditional grid energy, street lighting, renewable energy technologies on government buildings, and then, of course, conservation programs. Next slide, there we go. So this is just to demonstrate that rebates and incentives come from PG&E, and then the savings resulting from the implemented energy efficiency measures is, is how you create your reef. And we can go to the next slide. So this is just a case study. I found a municipality that is relatively small, still larger, about the size of the city of Yuba City and Sutter County together. So their conservation fund, they accrued the funds for future conservation projects. So they called it a conservation fund rather than a traditional revolving energy efficiency fund. And then the council approved funding for the conservation fund through incentives and savings associated with those projects that we discussed. And then it made them, one of the key things that I noticed about their case study is they were able to leverage those funds to secure a grant. So I thought that that was really an interesting way to use a reef. It's the first time I had seen something like that in my research. And I thought that could really put the city of Marysville in a good position and be more competitive in the future for some grants. So this is just some information that you can review in your time as you have it. I know that you've been provided this as well. But really, the purpose is to accrue that funding, thinking down the road, knowing that you're going to have projects, whether it's upgrading pumps to more energy-efficient pumps, upgrading lighting in the city hall. It could be a window retrofit on city hall, but anything that might make you more energy efficient in the future, those funds can be used toward. And so we're here to help you create those, that fund and develop the language around it, should you choose to engage in a project like this. And we are funded, our Energy Watch is funded between now and June 30th, so we can help you with that. And next slide. Okay, this is some more information. The city secured, the city of Visalia secured 1.14 million in funding through the Energy Block Grant Program. So that provided them with funding to do a lot of residential and commercial projects. So these are just some of the examples that they provided to me, but all of them have to do with energy efficiency projects. And you could even work on programs to, for facade improvements, window improvements, and if you were competitive, it could get this kind of block grant for your municipality. Okay, next slide. So these are just some suggested reef guidelines if your city were to consider doing this, implementing a fund. So all funds are designated just for energy efficiency measures. It can be set up like a loan program where it is paid back. But it's a financial tool to help fund your future energy efficiency measures. Some municipalities, interestingly enough, water, of course, it costs money to deliver water, and so they have integrated water efficiency measures into their reefs. So after five years, unutilized funds can revert back to the general fund at the will of the Board or Council. And since energy savings accumulate over time, it's recommended that your reef policy contain language such as deposits into the reef account be made over time as the cost savings are actualized. So that's very common language in a reef. And sometimes, as you know, PG&E rate structure changes, so as that happens, we can work to recalculate what we think your savings will be and make adjustments throughout the course of the project. Rebates and incentives will be directly deposited when they come into the city, would be directly deposited into the fund when they come in. And next slide. Okay, that's it. Really quick presentation, but we're here to help you if you so choose to engage in creating your own reef. Two of the projects we're working on with the Sutter Abuse Energy Watch partnership funding at this time are creating a greenhouse gas inventory for the county of Yuba and for the city of Yuba City, which, as you all know, are pretty costly endeavors. And we were able to do that for them internally at no cost to those municipalities. So anything related to energy efficiency, I'm here to help you, and you all know how to get ahold of me. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions from the board? Any questions from Bruce or Bill? There's no questions, Carrie. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll just see if staff has any recommendations for us on this matter, and then we can move from there. Let's move to COVID-19 Financial Impact Report. Ms. Brown?
I got a cough.
Uh-oh. Is this on? You can hear me right? It is on, right?
Yes, yes.
Testing, testing. Okay. Okay. Okay, here we are. So a couple of weeks ago, Mayor Sam Iola asked if I could give some kind of an update on how things were starting to shape up in light of COVID-19 and what potential fiscal impacts that could happen to the, half to the city of Marysville. And so with that, I developed this overview that looks both the economy, national, state, and local. Local, potential local impacts, federal and state COVID-19 legislation, projected loss of revenue, especially April to June 2020, immediate recommended budget adjustments to control spending, and then a big-picture overview of fiscal year 2021 of additional fiscal impacts and potential recommendations. This is over the next 12 to 24 months. So when it comes to the GDP, things are shaping up that right now, we're looking at a potential 2% contraction. Just to give you a perspective on that, it was about 2.5% contraction during the 2009 Great Recession, so not as drastic as that, although pretty serious. Those are the projections right now from April to June of this year. As for state unemployment filings, as of March 13th, sorry, there was 1.6 million Californians filed for unemployment in the week of March 7th, just over 43,000 filed. In the week of March 30th, 878,000 and change reported losing their jobs. Mortgage interest rates also were, Freddie Mac was projecting those to be 30-year to be 3.8 in this year, back in December of 2019. They've dropped even further than that in the last four months since those projections to 3.33, and they continue to decrease. And of course, on March 15th, the Federal Reserve slashed interest rates to 0%. And then there's the decrease in oil and gas prices. This is pretty dramatic in the last month, from March 2nd to April 3rd, a $30, $30 decrease in the price per barrel over the last month. And then I was only able to get, over the past year, the, the change over at the pump, which was back in April 30th, 2019, it was just under $4 a gallon. And today, well, April 4th, it was averaging in the Yuba, Yuba City, Marysville region, $2.88. And then, done some research as well on potential decline in recreational cannabis sales. Not a huge concern here, but it is being monitored closely. And one of the concerns is that buyers may, as their purchasing power changes, that they may move to the black market, which is 30 to 50% cheaper than in most dispensaries. And they're also experiencing a labor shortage right now in dispensaries as well, for the same reasons we are in other industries. So we have a lot of new orders. We've got a deferment of payment of sales tax, as you recently heard over the last couple of weeks. So if a business grosses $5 million or less per year, they are able to defer their taxes of up to $50,000 up to one year. That will have an impact certainly on the city of Marysville if businesses do choose to exercise that right. There are potentially no penalties for late payment of property taxes, which also could, in the longer term, have an impact on the city as well, and potential of suspension of payment of utility bills without any penalties for that. So those are all things that are currently either have recently passed or are on the table and being looked at that could have a fiscal impact on the city over the next 12 months or so, or longer. So local economy, looking at the local economy and what these projections are. And I just want to step back for a minute and say that the information that I'm presenting to the council today is in concert with talking to HDL, who does our sales tax and property tax projections, our financial advisor, Andy Heath, and even our bond advisor, Bud Levine. So I've talked to all of them in preparing this PowerPoint, and it isn't, and as well as, obviously, the finance director. So I just wanted to state that for the, for the record. So looking at April to June 2020, general sales tax, which is a 7.25% sales tax, is looking at a potential 20 to 25% decline. Measure C tax, a 25 to 30% decline, transit occupancy tax, 25%, and parking citations. We've moved our parking enforcement officer to other tasks in the city in response to COVID-19, and really thinking that it's probably not a good time. A lot of our citations occur around the hospital. Given the situation that we're in, it didn't seem like a good time to be, you know, really working on parking enforcement in some of the areas of the city, like around the hospital. So we've moved his efforts towards other things related to COVID-19. So that translates into real dollars. The general sales tax, we're looking at $109,000 to $132,000 over the next three months. If you also calculate in the potential for deferred sales tax, which we just mentioned, that legislation was passed, it could be up to $168,000 in the next three months. That could have an impact on this fiscal year. Measure C is between $188,000 to $221,000. And then again, with the sales tax deferment, of course, that bumps up that number to more like the neighborhood of $243,000. I just want to point out, when it comes to deferment of sales tax, the only sales tax that we looked at was our top 100 tax, what's the term, providers? Producers, thank you, tax producers. And that only refers to the deferment. So of course, we have other tax producers that were not included in this number. I didn't have those numbers available to me that could increase this number to some extent. Transit occupancy tax, with that 25% I just mentioned in the last slide, would be $7,500, and then about $15,000 for parking citations, since we've moved into other areas responding to COVID-19. So the total potential revenue loss is around $433,440. It's projected for April through June 30th. And, and I should also mention, it also is projecting two weeks, the last two weeks of June, we included those numbers as well because we started to see the impacts of COVID-19 in mid-June, in, sorry, mid-March. So it's the last two weeks of March and then this whole quarter. So recommended budget allocation suspensions based on this were the Medical Arts Specific Plan, which those funds, as you may recall during the mid-year budget, were pivoted from the general plan that was approved by the council last fiscal year into the specific plan. Obviously, those monies have not been spent yet, and I would recommend suspending allocation of those funds towards that project. The Assistant Planner Position, reducing the Municipal Resource Group contract, which is consulting for the city clerk and city manager's office, reducing that contract from the $48,000 to $28,000, or sorry, down to $20,000. So it would now be reducing $20,000 out of that contract. The SB 1 Road Pavement Project that the council approved last fall, which we were going to restart this spring, recommending suspending that project for the time being. And then we've secured another $100,000 in parks and facilities and repairs that have not been used this fiscal year, which would total a savings of a little over $1.1 million, potentially through this, through the remainder of this fiscal year. As you'll see in a minute, obviously, the differential between what's proposed for losses, potential losses in the previous slide, and the savings here that is recommended is more than double that. And part of it is because you're going to see in the next slides, in the next fiscal year, we're expecting additional impacts that we're not going to see this fiscal year. So if you would go to the next slide. So fiscal year 2021, additional potential fiscal impacts that we've already received some monies for this year. Very strong likelihood that there'll be no increase to property taxes, which the standard increase is up to 2%. That's allowed under Prop 13. So it's very likely that that will be suspended completely, so no additional revenue there. Obviously, the impact of businesses closing and not reopening is another potential impact. Businesses deciding to defer their payment of business licenses, as well as the sales tax we just mentioned, which certainly could happen. Potential Hard Rock deferring its annual payments as they're currently closed. And then continued financial impacts of the TOT are some additional aspects. And I just want to take a minute to mention, I've also had a chance to talk to Recology, as well as Cal Water Agency, just trying to get a sense from them of what they're seeing. Cal Water is, is pretty well-prepared and insulated from this, and they're not expecting much of an impact. Recology, on the other hand, is expecting some impact, especially in the commercial arena. They're already seeing some losses there. They don't have numbers yet for, to share with me, but they're going to be working on that, and they're going to share those numbers over the next couple of weeks. That would include impacting both the franchise agreement, as well as our host fee, or what's affectionately called our tipping fee. So both of those could be, certainly be impacted as well, those revenues to the city. Other impacts, potential adverse impacts to development and construction, like I mentioned, the Recology franchise agreement and tipping fees. Reduction to Prop 172 Public Safety Funds, those are funds that are derived from gas tax. So with changes in travel and less people on the roads, Prop 172 is certainly likely to be impacted. And then, of course, there's long-term potential impacts of homeowners stopping and deferring property tax, mortgage payments, and/or foreclosures. And just a few other areas of revenue that are in line items that I just added in here that aren't really covered in any of those other categories. Well, I did do planning and construction, but currently, this is what is budgeted for this year, fiscal 2019-20. This is the budget for these particular revenue line items, and I just kind of put the question out there, will we be able to continue to count on these line items in fiscal year 2021? Or will we see additional drops there? I think we know the answer to at least some of them. I can tell you right now, the facility user fee is considerably underperforming the baseball lease as well. But building, planning, and construction was going fairly well and exceeded expectations up until, you know, the mid-year budget. Now things have changed again. The BMX Park is, continues to be open, which is a pretty decent revenue source for the city. And I, it's uncertain whether that'll continue to be like that, or whether we'll see changes there if the orders from the state and local government change as well, so. So one of the things that Andy and I have, Andy Heath, our financial advisor, have had several conversations about now, is just that I think is underappreciated perhaps sometimes, or underlooked, you know, examined, only because it's hard to quantify. And we like to quantify things, right? I mean, it's much more comfortable to know, this is how much something's going to cost, or this is the loss. But we're seeing, and it's being talked about in the press and in the media, that people's behavior and psychological impacts are being impacted, and people are changing their behavior. And some of it may be long-term. Some of it, for some people, may be permanent, that could certainly have an impact on the overall economy. So these are just a few of the things that we came up with, and Andy and I have now had multiple conversations about, and I think it's very potentially real, so. So budget recommendations looking ahead, it, probably what I'll be coming forward to the council by June is suspending any and all nonessential expenses until we get a handle on how this really impacts the city. Suspending capital projects that require a general fund match, suspending one-time nonessential purchases of equipment, apparatus, software, nonessential grant applications requiring a local match, potentially the community sponsorship fund, non-public safety employee furloughs is another potential area of topic. And then also considering issuing a tax anticipation note, which I've been talking to our bond advisor about. So these are, again, I'm not saying I'm recommending these today, but I'm just saying that these are things that I'm going to be looking at more closely as we build the budget and move towards June. And I think the last slide is just some final thoughts, that this is a very uncertain and extremely volatile market and future revenue streams. Lot of moving parts. Andy and I just talked about it yesterday, that one of the things that makes this so challenging is it's, it's rather complicated. There's a lot of different revenue sources and unexpected variables of things that could occur or not occur. It's, it's hard to say. Future state and, and federal legislation on local government, I think we all know that's changing almost on a daily basis, and how that impacts local government remains to be seen. Prioritizing building up general fund reserves and prioritizing controlling spending on, spending on all nonessential spending items will be things that I will be recommending in the next budget. So that concludes my presentation. I think one last thing I do want to say is just that when I worked on this, a lot over the last five days, especially very intensely, and talked, like I said, multiple conversations with Andy, one of the things that we appreciated was this isn't a typical recession. It's not like, like we can go back in time and look at like, well, how did everything, how was everything in other recessions, right? Because it's not quite like another recession. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison with 2009, for example, or any other prior recession, because things just suddenly stopped really quickly, quicker even than in some of those recessions, so prior recessions. So that has made it doubly difficult to do the kinds of projections, because, you know, for Andy, 25 years as a finance director, he goes back and looks at history to, to build a budget or make recommendations to the council. And so he, you know, too, is, is kind of struggling with how to move forward and how to make recommendations. So we're going to be monitoring the sales tax and the property tax, like, pretty much on a daily basis for the next three months to see, you know, really, is this going to pan out the way I just delivered to the council? Or will there be other changes? Or will there be other changes and we'll have to make other adjustments? That concludes my presentation.
Yes, sir. All right, explain the tan a little bit more.
The tax anticipation note is basically, it's a short-term note, usually done from one public agency to another public agency, where you can, based on anticipated revenue that you think is going to come into in the future, like if sales tax, you know, rebounds, which is of course what we all hope to see, for example, that you could take out a note or like a loan from another public agency. It's usually for 12-month period, although you can extend it beyond that. And it's usually at a fairly low interest rate, lower than hopefully a bank. So, you know, we could look to some of our partners. That's not something I would want to run out and do by any stretch and have any more debt, but it's just, it's, it's a, it's a potential possibility, it's on the table.
To the chair.
Yes.
Did Andy have future projections? I remember one conversation that I had with you about the projection for the percentage of decrease in tax revenue to June, but were there further projections out to August or September? I don't know if that's anything even that we need to...
Yeah, I mean, originally, it was that even after this, there'll be an additional 10% decline in the next two quarters in the next fiscal year. But even that honestly is being like revised and reconsidered on a daily basis. So it's pretty hard.
Thank you.
Are there questions for, from Mr. Buckelwoll or Mr. Simmons? He's having a hard time with his microphone. He just texted me. I don't know if there's a phone number he can call in with.
Can you also advise him there's a chat video? You can type a question in.
I think he'll want to talk, won't he?
You can either text or chat the question, Bruce, or have use the phone number. Was there a phone number tied to the front page of the email, of front page of the Facebook?
Agenda.
The agenda? I believe the phone number is the 1-669-991-28. And then you have to use the ID number there, Bruce. So we'll wait for you, and then I'll ask Mr. Simmons if he has any questions. Mr. Simmons? He just put himself in mute.
Okay, am I okay now, Mayor?
You're, you're on. Thank you.
Okay. I was just curious, that this loan package that our sister city across the river has generated for their businesses, are we in line with that? Or what, what's the status of that? And how do they do it? And have we given any thought to that, to help our businesses recover, other than the loan project? Marty?
Yep, sure. So Sutter County and as of today, it's my understanding, Yuba County, both contributed $250,000 to a loan program. And I, if I remember, recall correctly, a small business could get up to $20,000 loan from, you know, and for, for the Yuba County Board of Supervisors, they're $250,000. Of course, they would want those businesses to be in Yuba County, and the same with the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. And they are, I believe, yeah, the EDC is going to be Economic Development Corporation for Yuba-Sutter County will be administering the loan programs. And like I said, it was today that Yuba County passed that resolution. That's my understanding. County Administrator Bendorf gave me the heads up on Saturday. And so that's as much detail as I have right now on this loan program.
Perhaps Jonathan can research that a little bit more for you and us, and find out how an incorporated city like the city of Marysville would qualify for a county project? Do we qualify? And what does our business have to go through? And what's the interest rates on these loans?
So Jonathan has actually already been tasked with getting that word out about the upcoming loan. I sent that to him over the weekend, and he is going to be trying to help make the connection between businesses and the EDC's loan program. So he's going to be working on that.
Okay, well, serving on the executive board for the EDC, myself and Mr. Buckelwoll, we'd like to be able to take some information back when we have our meeting, whether it be on the TV or whatever. But I don't know, I don't think we want to lose the opportunity to help our businesses if we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Simmons, Councilmember Simmons. Vice Mayor Buckelwoll, are you, are you in now?
I called, and I'm not sure if I am or not.
You are.
You are.
Okay, great. The only question I'd had previously was on that property tax deferment. That has been approved by the governor?
No, it has not. It's being, but it is being discussed. So I just put it out there as, these are unknown, these are other unknowns that could change any day at any time, because it is being discussed.
Okay, thank you. And you were talking about the public agencies during the shared funding or the lending. What other agency would possibly not be in the condition we're in?
Well, public agency doesn't necessarily have to be a municipality or a county. It could be a utility district that has a different source of funding than we do. So.
Oh.
That's a possibility. Any public agency.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. You mentioned that some of our staff are currently attending to issues related to the COVID-19. Are those expenses being reimbursed? Is that part of the, and how much do you see us getting reimbursed for that?
So I actually, I was going to bring forward at the next meeting, more update on the FEMA guidelines, because those are changing pretty quickly as well. But right now, we could project out what we think, which we're just starting to, and actually, we just...
Is it about $443,000?
I believe the answer is no, to that. But we're just starting to do those projections. But as the city clerk pointed out in our meeting earlier this morning, that there is a provision that would allow us to go, I think it's to the state, actually not FEMA, that would allow us to go for emergency funding, up to 50% of what we think our losses, what we project our losses to be. And then the state could give us up to 25% of that, so they could hold back. So we're looking at that possibility, but that, just learned that in the last, what, 24, 48 hours or something? Yeah. So we're looking at that. And then, of course, as I think I've mentioned to the council in the update, we are doing all of our FEMA, you know, reimbursement forms, and everybody is looking at everything as far back as when the president passed his directive on March 13th. So we're all doing that.
So the example of the community, community services officer, that, that time is going to be asked for reimbursement?
The, for the parking enforcement?
Sure, the community.
Yes.
Services person.
Yep, we can look at, we can look at that, including, we can also include in the emergency request to the state for that 50, 25% I just mentioned. We can look at other kinds of losses, like the sales tax and the money you just saw. It's just, we won't get all of it. We'll get, if we're lucky, we'd get 25% of it, basically.
So again, those projections are going to be, I mean, the 443, I mean, you could done a range, right? Because the losses could be less, just because we might be reimbursed by the feds or the state in some case.
Correct, yep.
So I guess I want to make sure that we kind of add that as part of the, this conversation. The SB 1, I'm having a really hard time with, because how much SB 1 dollars will we lose by giving, by not spending the $700,000?
So you may, as you may recall, back in September, when this project came to the council, one of the provisions that was in the staff report stated that if the MOE and the SB 1 stays in the streets division, it can be used for a variety of things, not just road rehabilitation. So what we'd be proposing is leaving that money in streets and/or capital projects. We can also put it there, not in the general fund. You're not allowed to do that. And it would be used for basically paying for the streets division, which could be anything from salaries and benefits of employees who work in public works, to striping, to putting stop signs in. It can be a whole variety of things related to streets that aren't necessarily just a road project. So that's what we'd be recommending doing, basically. Because without that money there, because in the past, that's what we were using it for. MOE money was used for salaries and benefits of the street employees and striping and other kinds of street-related activity. If it's not, if, if it's not used there and we go do a rehabilitation project, then the streets division has to be shored up with general fund money in order to pay for those positions. So these are monies that are only earmarked for either streets or capital projects.
So you're saying there'll be additional savings if we don't move in this direction and saving the 70, there might be additional savings, because we're using some of those funds to pay for some of our street folks?
Right, I'm saying by not doing a road rehabilitation project and using the money to keep it in the streets division to pay for a variety of streets things, then I don't have to put in, you know, or I don't, I wouldn't be recommending to the council that we transfer general fund money for the streets division to supplant that. Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense. I mean, it, I, it sounds like you might be able to have additional savings in the general fund.
By doing what I'm recommending.
Correct.
Yes, that's exactly correct. That's exactly what I'm saying, right.
So then I guess maybe that should be part of the analysis, too. What additional, I mean, are you going to have a one-to-one decrease in your street costs, personnel?
The streets division, I don't know exactly what the budget is off the top of my head. Do you know what that streets division is? So 250 and 300,000.
You might have a one-to-one.
Yes, so, yeah, right.
So I guess you can add that to that analysis as well. That's what I'm asking, like, if you're going to move in that direction, you actually have some general fund savings in that.
Right, yes.
The Hard Rock, have you heard of any rumors that they're not going to do their contribution that they committed to?
No, but this year, we are doing a prorated amount with them based on when they opened, which we originally budgeted the entire 250,000. But we are doing a prorated based on their, I think November 1 is their open date that they, was the official open date. So it's based on a November 1. But no, but it's...
Okay, you haven't heard something directly?
Nope.
Okay, so I guess maybe a call would be helpful, just making a call and just make, you know, I guess I don't want it to be part of a public record if a call hasn't been made and they're actually signaling that there's probably going to be a reduction in their payment. Lease agreements out, oh, I don't know what I wrote there. I wish I would have...
Do you want to go back to the PowerPoint? Or, because you have a hard copy.
Lease agreements, does that make any sense, lease agreements?
BMX was a lease agreement.
The, the, I mean, those are, again, I mean, those are contracts, right? Is there, do they have outs in their contracts that, that will allow them to, even if they're not in operation? I mean, is there an out in their lease agreement that they sign, that there's an out in circumstances?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to research that.
Thank you. The one thing that I am, have you considered, furloughs for staff?
That is one of the items that I, I listed as a potential future.
Did you?
Yes, for nonessential employees that we would be considering and looking at in preparation for the next fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry. And then where would our goals and objectives fit in this? I mean, are you, in your, in your budget, you're going to tie the goals and objectives that we talked about a month ago, and are they coming back? I guess I don't want to lose sight of that, especially if you're going to introduce the idea that we don't go after grants or go after grants that have some type of, you know, that we have to actually put some money out of our general fund. In my mind, that's why we have reserves. And I think we want to continue working as much as we can in some of these public works or some of these capital improvements in our city. And in my mind, we want to make sure that, I'm happy to hear that there wasn't any talk about reduction in our public safety or public works or any of those services, because I think the city and our residents are really happy that we're not looking at that. And I think, I think we're all, we're all feeling good that you're not looking at reducing our public safety or public works services. So I appreciate that. But we do have reserves to be able to continue some of these capital improvement projects that we, you know, that we've been thinking about it, or that we brought up during our goals session. So I guess what I'm, I'm interested in saying is, and I don't know what you expect the next steps to be, whether you're going to bring resolutions forward to us in the next few months to redo some of these or some changes in the budget. So maybe you can talk about that. What are the next steps? What do you expect from us, you know?
So the goals are definitely going to be coming back to the council. I've been working with Katie Burdick on that. It has slowed down a little bit and light of what we're dealing with. So probably we're looking at a May date. Originally, I was hoping for April 21st, but we're talking about either the first or second week, second meeting in May. We have made revisions based on feedback and made some changes there, so we're very close to having that prepared. So we will bring that back, and I'll make sure to be able to explain how that, what these proposals are, how they're consistent with the council's goals as well. In terms of next steps, if what I'd like to do is bring back in a recommendation to the council to formally suspend the items for the remainder of this fiscal year, I don't look at any of this as like, that's it, it's off the table. It's more like a wait-and-see and suspension while we see how the fallout is really going to be, maybe it'll be okay, maybe it's not going to be that bad. So, but it, like I said, there's so many variables and so many unknowns, and it's a fairly complex issue. So it's more like a suspension and a wait-and-see is what I'm proposing. So I'd like to come back first with, for the remainder of the fiscal year, a proposal for some of those suspensions. And then the next step is starting to build a budget that would be a budget looking at mainly like a baseline budget, basically, without any additional, other than what's already, you know, going on with obviously salaries and employees and benefits and all that, and some of the, the general work that we do on a daily basis. But, and waiting and seeing and bringing something back once we see how the next two quarters go, because we're looking at potentially additional declines.
So is that going to need budget revisions?
From this year's budget? It would mean basically a status quo budget is what we would be looking at. So like some of the money that was in this last year's budget for a number of grants, for example, and one-time allocations and local grants with local match, looking at suspending that unless it's, you know, absolutely needed. So, you know, we put in quite a bit of one-time monies last, last fiscal year for a number of grants that we went after this year. So we'd be looking at suspending that kind of activity. We hired additional part-time seasonal staff, looking at a wait-and-see approach, I guess, again, on how things turn out and monitoring the first fiscal quarter and seeing if we see additional declines, or are things evening out, or are they picking back up? And then coming back with a budget amendment. I mean, we can always come back at any time and amend the budget if things are looking better. We don't have to, once it's adopted, that it's just, that's it, it's etched in stone for 12 months until the next fiscal year. And so I wouldn't recommend we do that. And we, we know now, I mean, we're really going to have to monitor the sales and property tax, especially in Measure C, and it's, as well as Measure F, and its performance, like literally week to week. We're going to be looking at how, you know, the way that we've been looking at how Measure F is performing and reporting out, you know, fairly regularly to the council on its performance. We're going to have to do that for everything else now.
You don't get your payments from the state weekly, right? How do you measure, how do you keep track of that? How do you monitor those?
Payments from the state? Well, we can see how our sales tax is performing. I mean, we can look at the HDL website, and we have a login, and we're members, and they help us project, like how, yeah, they helped me with this PowerPoint, actually. So yeah, we can look at how is the sales tax performing versus previous years? How's Measure C performing versus last year this time? We'll be looking at that kind of, you know, comparison month-to-month. What were we doing in April 2019? And how's it, I mean, that's, you know, kind of how we would go back and make a comparison and monitor, so that we know, can we make an adjustment? Or do we need to make an adjustment in a different direction, which I hope isn't the case, of course. And that FEMA and the reimbursement, I think, yeah, we'll, we'll get something back. It's just, again, I don't know how much, right? I don't know, is it going to be 100%? Is it going to be 25%, 50%? We're at the very beginning stages of figuring out. And it's, again, those guidelines are changing every day.
Well, I think all of the ones you listed, we don't really know, right? I mean, I think that's part of the, just doing the analysis.
Correct.
I, I, I am going to be a bit, I'm going to, not necessarily in favor of not moving forward with some of... with some of the capital projects that we have. And that's just my, my whole thing. I think those are important for our, kind of our goals and objectives that we have for the city. I think our folks expect our roads and sidewalks and all that stuff to, to be improved and, you know, we hope we get the CDVG dollars for the roads construction and so we can move that forward. Unfortunately, we didn't get the Prop 68 dollars, so we're not gonna see any improvements in our parks. We really need to start looking at how we, we, even, even during this time, I think it's gonna be important for us to kinda keep in mind what's gonna make our community better in the long term. And if we have to sacrifice some of our reserves, then maybe we look at that as well. I'm glad that we're not sacrificing our public safety. So thank you for your staff, too, working through that. Yes?
I just wanna add to those comments. I agree that I'd love to see us move forward, but at the same time, I, I appreciate Marty showing caution in moving forward because we have those reserves and that's great that we have them, but if it comes to the point where we may need them to keep employing our public safety employees, I would hate to have spent them on a capital project that possibly could've waited and been funded in another way. So I'm, I'm in favor of postponing some of these things until we know for sure what our finances are gonna look like. But, yeah, I don't like to see things being stalled either, but none of us could've predicted this, and I think that the public also could, would, understands the circumstances and would, would be understanding of our, our situation and decision-making and that. So I don't mind waiting until we're sure about what we're spending and what our needs are.
Yes, sir. So Marty, you're gonna bring suggestions back to us at the next council? Is that what I'm hearing? This is just a preliminary lineup of what you did right now, right?
What I'd like to do is bring back a recommendation for suspensions for the remainder of this fiscal year, yes, which is what you really kinda saw those recommendations for approval. I mean, you know, some of it you already approved in the mid-year budget. You could just not do it, but I would rather have the council be weighing in on not doing some of those things, obviously, right? So, so that's the near-term step is to bring that back for council approval. The budget, you know, it's another couple months out. We're still working through a lot more before we'll have a budget ready for the council to approve no later than the second meeting in June.
So maybe cart for the horse, but can you remind me, where, where does the reserve stand right now?
Our starting fund balance reserve last year, I believe, was 2.4 million or 2.5?
That presentation's coming up next, that's right, sorry, thank you.
So the last, so this is the audit for 1819, and so the ending fund balance is of June 30th in 2019 was 2.8 million.
Okay.
What were you expecting?
Well, we had, actually, in the budget was 2.4 or 2.5 when we started the budget for this year. I don't remember what we, off the top of my head. It wasn't 2.8, though, it was lower than that, wasn't it?
It was like.
I believe it was between 2.4 and 2.5.
I'm gonna go with 2.1, 2.3.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further comments, Vice Mayor or Councilmember Simmons?
I do. Thank you for unmuteing me. I wish you would leave me unmuted. I'll mute from my end, please, because I can't jump in on the conversation, so I'd appreciate if you left me unmuted. Yeah, I'm on, on this, I don't wanna get into touching the reserves yet. I know at some point we might need to, but I think we oughta look at this at a 30-day at a time and see where we're at, see if this goes south on us. It may not. So I wanna be really careful about where we go, jumping too far into the reserves too quickly. I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, we need to continue some of what, at least keep the planning going on some of what we were doing, but I think we need to be very careful on dipping into those reserves.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons? Bill, are you there?
Mute thing, I can't figure it out. Am I okay now?
Yes, thank you.
I think we oughta stay the course and be very conservative in what we're spending money on. We don't know how this thing's gonna go. Is this gonna go through June? And this furloughing, I have an issue with the furloughing. The furloughing didn't do much for us last time we did that because it wasn't organized very well. I just feel that we need to stay the course right now, not jump off the deep end and start doing all this stuff, be very conservative in what we do, do the bare minimum of what we have to do for public safety until we get a better feel for how this is going. You know, we got a couple of weeks ahead of us here that are pretty bad, and you don't know which way it's gonna go. So my concern is, and my suggestion is, we may be very conservative, just do what we have to do to make things safe for our public and defray any costs or any expenditures that are not absolutely community safety-oriented and wait this thing out. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate your input. I think there's, do you want any, is that enough input from, for you from staff?
I just, one last thing I think I would like to ask. So I was thinking of coming back with a recommendation for the remainder of the fiscal year for suspending allocation of funding that was already either budgeted for or approved. In light of the comments I just heard, do you wanna wait a little bit longer than just the next meeting and sort of hold off but not come for formal action until maybe the second meeting in May, when we'll, we'll know better, I think, hopefully, where we are?
Yeah, and I think you're pretty good about keeping us all informed. You know, things shift fairly quickly. You've been very good about, you know, meeting with us or meeting us with us weekly or before a meeting and stuff, and I think we can gauge. I think the expectations are that things will get worse. You know, all we can do is, for the best. Oh, okay.
So, okay.
So I guess, I don't know.
Yeah. I got it.
Let's play by ear.
All right, sounds good.
But I, I think, I think overall, I think we wanna stay conservative. I'm gonna have personally a hard time giving up public work projects, but again, let's play by ear.
Okay.
But I, but I think most importantly, I think everyone's, well, I think Bill Simmons said it, and I think McKenzie said it, public safety is the most important thing, and if they need additional resources, we wanna make sure we know that as well.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are we going to, is any public input on this?
We don't have to, but we can ask for public input. Is there any members of the public out there who have input on this? Please let Nicole know. Not sure how, but.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
So we have a user by the name of Daryl's iPhone, and he would like to know, are the capital projects essential or nonessential? If they are nonessential, then they should be placed on hold, in my opinion. We should not dip into the reserves this early.
Daryl, if you can send Nicole your full name for the record, I appreciate it and thank you for your input, sir. We have a community consent calendar. Any members of the public like to address the council on matters not on the agenda or consent calendar items? We ask you to raise your hand via Zoom. That's weird. And where your call, we, we ask you to unmute, you will be unmuted by our city clerk, and you'll be addressed to the city council, and we ask you to please state your name clearly for audio recording. You're, you're requested to address the council and not the audience, and we ask you the, and we let you know that by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like to be distributed to the council, we ask you to please mail it to the city clerk at 526 C Street, Marysville, California, 95901. Do we have any public comments?
None at this time, Mayor.
No public comments? Oh, so seeing no public comments, let's move to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine or therefore approved by one motion unless any member of the council or our city manager first requests that a matter be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. What's the will of the council?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second, Mayor. Okay.
Councilmember Simmons, thank you for the second. We'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bata Kaboli?
Aye.
Mayor Sam Iowa?
Aye, thank you.
To the chair?
Yes, Bruce?
I, I keep, for some reason, getting muted off. I wanted to ask a question previous on the suspending any of the projects. Can I go back and ask that question?
Sure.
The only, the thing when talking about suspending those projects, which I think we probably need to do, we're not putting any kind of term on it, are we? We're not saying we're suspended, suspending for a month or three months or six months, so we could put it on a suspension, but we can bring it back anytime. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor Bata Kaboli, this is Marty. Yes, I, what I'm proposing for both the remainder of this fiscal year and will be likely proposing, unless something radically changes, for the next fiscal budget with the baseline budget that I mentioned, is really like putting the money into a savings account, if you will, and not spending it, rather than budgeting for it, because if you budget for it, you'll spend it. So the money will be there, and it's sort of like building up the reserve even more than it's already built up. And that will require that on a case-by-case basis, whether it's directed by the council or there's tremendous need and there's a necessity and essential activity that needs to be done, we'd be having to come back to the council to basically dip into that reserve rather than having a larger budget like what we might normally do if we weren't in the situation we're in. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think so. I, I just wanted to make sure that if we put a suspension on the projects, we're not putting it with a specific timeframe that we could withdraw that suspension at any time.
That's correct.
Okay, so even in, if, in the budget, it's, we're not budgeting those items, which is what I think you just said, we're not gonna, we're gonna leave it in the general fund. Is that actually suspending a project because the project is no longer there if it's not in the budget, correct?
Well, it's still in the budget, but what I'm proposing is suspending the spending portion of it. So there'll still be projects that are there on the table, but we're just not gonna spend the money, is what I'm proposing. So we're saving that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that, okay, that makes sense. So it's still, the projects are still there. Yeah, so, again, just to be sure, the final thing was, anything that we suspend, we can bring back from that suspension at any time with council approval.
Yes, the one area that I would say maybe is not quite as fluid as, or wouldn't be exactly the same as a capital project, like the public works projects, is like, for example, the one position that we're proposing not to fund. So right now, we'd suspend it, but in the new budget, I would probably be coming back, and unless something's radically different, we would circulate that money differently to, to balance the budget or just put it back into the reserve, like in a savings account, and we could take it back out if we wanted to fund that one position. So positions are a little different than capital projects. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, but we would still have the positions already approved, right? The positions would be approved, we, we would have to reapprove the funding then?
So currently, the assistant planner position was, for example, was approved via the mid-year budget review and amendments. So one of the things I just mentioned was coming back to the council to reconfirm the proposal that I just mentioned about suspending those allocations. But right now, we're gonna monitor the budget, and if it makes sense to come back and ask to formally suspend those allocations, we do that maybe more like the second meeting of May after we've got six more weeks under our belt of what this situation looks like. So I guess the thing, I think, Vice Mayor, the thing I'm trying to say is, the money is gonna sit there in a savings account, and if the council decides and direct staff to bring something back, to spend money that's in the savings account and start making it a continuous part of the budget, that could happen. The other thing that could happen is we come back to you and say, we really need this money, or we really think we can now pay for the assistant planner position. That's another way it could happen, but the money would be there, and it would not be part of the current reserve, which is the 2.8 million we just mentioned as of last June 30th.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Through the chair, through the chair?
Yes.
You know, I might add to that, this funding for positions, I think that we should think about suspending any type of hiring or filling any position that's not essential, mission essential to the safety of this community until we get through this crisis. I don't think we should be out hiring people right now when we don't know how much money we're going to have, and I think those suspensions, those allocations, what's in the budget, allocated and not funded, should never be funded until we find out where we are physically. And I think that if it's not mission essential, this position, that we should not even consider funding it until later. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, any further comments on, on the previous presentation on the effect of COVID-19 to our budget? Okay, so we'll just move forward. Thank you, Marty. We're gonna move to discussion action items, starting with item seven. Item seven is approval of city Marysville auditor financial statements and supplemental information for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. The recommendation is to approve the city Marysville auditor financial statements and supplemental information for fiscal year ended 30, 2019, as presented by Richardson and Company, LLP, certified public accountants. This comes from our finance director, Ms. Siski.
That's close. Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to present the 2018-19 fiscal year audit. It actually will be presented by Ingrid Shublin of Richardson and Company, who did our audit for this year, so I'm gonna turn it over to her so she can give you the PowerPoint presentation. Can everybody?
Can everybody hear me?
I can. I can.
Can everybody hear me?
I, I can hear you, it's just there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah, there is a lot of feedback.
You cannot, that is not audible to understand.
I do wanna ask everyone to please have, um, their, uh, microphone muted, uh, while you're in the meeting just to kinda help us with the, uh, with the sound so we can hear folks. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I am having Ingrid call in, so she should be just a moment.
Mayor? Do we have a new fiscal manager by the name of Timothy? I see his picture here. Is he, uh, one of our new members of city council? I'm being facetious, I think he's the husband of our finance director. Just to break the silence here.
Ingrid, slide nine is on, can you hear me?
Yay!
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Okay. So I'm, uh, planning to present the results of the fiscal year end, uh, June 30, 2019 audit. I think the slides are coming up here in just a minute. Uh, you can advance to the next slide. So included in your packet are various reports that we issued as a result of our audit. The first one is the, uh, audited financial statements containing our opinion. Uh, second document is a report on the internal control systems of the city, including compliance with laws and regulations that affect the financial statement. Another document referred to is the communication, required communications letter, also governance letter that contains certain items are required to communicate to you. Um, also included in the package is a management letter that contains our recommendations for improvement. And lastly, appropriations limit, uh, compliance report, uh, required by state law. Next slide. Um, so the, uh, this slide summarizes the results and observations in the audit. Uh, the first one, um, the, we issued a unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Uh, that indicates that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with government accounting principles. Um, the audit this year was delayed, uh, mostly due to staffing issues. Um, the city, um, lost its senior accountant in January of this year, which delayed, uh, completion of the audit. Um, also, you may recall in the 2018 audit, there were an unusually large number of adjustments during the audit process because the books were not completely closed prior to the start of the audit. The number of adjustments made during the 2019 audit was, uh, less, so there was some reduction and improvement in, in this area. Um, we'd also identified a number of, um, areas in the 2018 audit that required, um, uh, improvement. Uh, the timing of the 2018 audit completion, since that audit was not completed until the end of fiscal year 2019, um, there really wasn't sufficient time to implement those improvements. Uh, so the comments that you'll see, the findings that you'll see later on in the presentation will include some items that are, um, repeat or carried over from, uh, the 2018 audit. Next slide. Uh, so the next few slides, um, I'm gonna highlight some of the key financial information in the financial statements. Uh, this first slide here is, uh, referencing page 16, which is within the, um, audited financial statement document. Uh, the governmental activities numbers showing up on this page represent, um, all of the funds of the city except for the wastewater fund and the successor agency. And the numbers on these pages are also considered full accrual. And the accounting is similar to that for a for-profit, uh, corporation. So it contains all of the assets, including infrastructure, um, all other, uh, long-term assets. It also includes items such as debt and other, um, long-term liabilities. So the numbers you see here that when, um, shows here, the unrestricted net position is in a deficit of 9.3 million. Um, that's mainly because of, um, the, excuse me, the pension liability that's shown within these financial statements that when you look at general fund activities, you don't see those types of liabilities in there. So it's primarily the net pension liability of 13.7 million that is driving the unrestricted net position to be in a negative position. That net pension liability, though, is not a liability that's currently due and payable, but it's a projection of the amount that's needed to cover the retirement of all current employees, not just the current retirees. Next slide. Uh, page 18 within the financial statement shows the general fund balance. So these are the numbers that you would typically look at when you're looking at the reserves for budgeting purposes. And it excludes those long-term liabilities such as the pension liability. So included within the general fund, you have, uh, 744,000 of, um, restricted resources. Those are amounts set aside to cover debt service payments on the city's, uh, COPs. After the restricted reserves, you have 2.8 million of unrestricted reserves, um, set aside for various purposes and used in the future. Next slide. Page 20, uh, within the audited financial statements includes the general fund revenues and expenditures. Um, overall for the year, the revenues in the general fund exceeded expenses by 395,000. So amounts were added to reserves during the year. Um, included within that, um, surplus is 533,000 of insurance proceeds. And that was from the, um, the water damage on the fire station. Um, so that is mostly contributing to that, um, surplus that you had of 395,000. Um, if you compare your, uh, what you budgeted for property and sales tax compared to what you actually received, it was 900. Yes?
Thank you. Um, wasn't the 533 insurance proceeds spent on the improvements?
Uh, yes, it was, yeah, it was spent, so it's, but there was more spent than what the proceeds were. So, yeah, they were, they were spent on the, um, repairs that were done.
Okay, so I guess I misheard you because what I heard you say is that 395, um, um, that the revenues exceeded expenses, uh, was partly because of the insurance proceeds?
Right, had you, well, I mean, there were improve, other improvements done other than just repairing, um, or bringing it up to the, um, the intended purpose. So, yeah, there, so, yeah, you, if you wouldn't have had the, the 533,000, you wouldn't have expended, uh, needed to expend as much, um, for the, um, work that was done at the fire station. I don't recall offhand, Jennifer might know what the, um, amount that was spent in excess of the insurance proceeds. I don't recall offhand that figure.
Um, right now, it was about, I believe it was around 30,000. And we're still working on finalizing that claim to be able to get the remaining amount, um, out of the insurance um, in this current fiscal year.
I must, I, I just must be confused. How much did you spend on the entire project?
I would have to look into that. Are you talking about for fiscal year 1819 or for the project in total?
For this one, for this?
Correct, because it went over a few fiscal years. So for fiscal year 1819, I believe we had spent like 560,000. It was just a little about 30,000 more than what we received in proceeds because we're still finalizing the claim.
I guess I'll take it off, off air. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused because you're saying that the 533 helped us with our, uh, with our revenues? Meaning, she's saying that we had a surplus of 395, the way I'm reading, that the revenues exceeded expenses in our budget. So that to me says that there's 395 surplus?
Right, so a part of that is the, is the third bullet point here with the, uh, the taxes being higher than what you expected than, uh, basically than what you had budgeted. So that contributed to, um, uh, to the surplus.
To the chair? To the chair? I, I'm in the same, that, I'm in the same exact spot you are. I'm, I'm totally confused, um, i- if we, that our revenues are exceeding our expenses. And the way this is showing, I, I'm in agreeance with you that 500, the reason is because of the $533,000 insurance proceeds, which either did or will have to be spent, correct? I'm confused too.
Well, I'm just saying it includes the, um, excess of revenue and expenses. If you look at, um, comparing your budget to, um, actual, let me get that page there. Uh, I believe actually page 20, trying to turn to page 20 here. Yeah, so I don't know if anyone has the, uh, audited financial statements printed. Page 20 is the, uh, actually not the budget, page 22 is the budget, um, budget to actual. So, looking at the, um, what you budgeted for insurance proceeds was 39,000, actual was 533. So, um, that, the budget variance created, um, or, or helped with bringing the bottom line to the 395. What you budgeted based on the numbers in, um, uh, on page 22, you budgeted a deficit of 203,000. And you had a surplus of 395. And so the three contributing components to that are the, um, taxes and assessments being higher than budgeted, your sales and use tax being higher than budgeted, and then the insurance proceeds that were not budgeted. But then expenses were, um, were higher than budget by 639,000.
Okay, thank you. So we didn't bu, we didn't budget the 533 insurance proceeds even though we were expecting it, uh, the, from the previous year that we'd spent it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was budgeted.
How come we didn't budget it if we knew we spent it?
Through the chairs, I understand we had to spend the money and then it was a claim and then we got reimbursed it.
But I guess we should have budgeted if we knew we were gonna get the claim.
It's insurance companies.
Possibly, but that was the prior person who prepared the budget, so I do not have an answer of why they did not include it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that, that clears it up for me, um, that it wasn't, it wasn't in the budget, uh, when we passed it in 1920 and that's why it was an increase in, in revenue because it wasn't budgeted.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next slide. Um, so the wastewater fund of financial activity, excuse me, is on page 23 and 24. Um, it shows that, uh, the wastewater fund had reserves, unrestricted reserves available of, um, only 112,000. And that is after, uh, its share of the pension liability of 761,000. Now, that reserve amount of 112,000 does include, um, outstanding, there's outstanding debt, um, in the wastewater fund of 24.5 million. About half of that, about 12 million are the revenue bonds. And the other 12 million are amounts owed to Linda County Water District for the city's share of the, um, water treatment plan and the pipeline, um, connecting to it. Uh, the wastewater fund had a net loss during the year of, um, 1.2 million. And, um, that's really attributable to two non-recurring types of expenditures that caused the loss. Uh, one of them was a $575,000 settlement with a contractor related to the pump station project. And then the other 750,000 was, um, amounts that were withheld by Linda County Water District from the loan proceeds that were received during the year. Uh, the loan with Linda Water was, uh, $2 million. They withheld 750,000, uh, which is supposedly the city's share of, um, the existing facilities that they indicated would reduce the phase two work. That, I believe, is being researched a little bit further with, um, the water district, um, that came up during the audit process. So really, the net loan proceeds that you received, um, was the one point, uh, about 1.2 million. So without these two kind of unusual one-time types of, um, expenditures, the wastewater fund would have been close to a break-even position for, um, fiscal year 1819. Next slide. Um, also included in your package is the required communications letter. Some of the highlights, um, of information that's included in that letter. Um, it describes the fact that we had, um, 82 adjustments to the city's books that were identified during the audit process. This is an improvement over the 103 adjustments that were noted in the 1718 audit. But there's still a ways to go as far as, uh, the city needing to strengthen its accounting processes to ensure that the number of adjustments is, uh, brought down. I typically use a, kind of an average number of adjustments, probably for your side of, of city would be about 10 adjustments would be the goal, 10 to 20, um, adjustments. Uh, the letter also discusses the unfunded pension liability. Um, in total, for, um, city as a whole, the pension liability was 14.46 million. There was just a slight increase during the year in that liability of about 8,500. The reason why it did not change significantly is because CalPERS, uh, did not significantly change any of the actuarial assumptions that are used to calculate that liability. Um, as a result of having to make these pension liability, um, adjustments, it increases pension expense by 510,000. And you don't, you don't actually see that 510,000 figure in your budgeting process uh, because the pension liability isn't included within, um, the numbers that you, you budget for. because the pension liability isn't included within the numbers that you budget for. Next slide. Our next report, I'd like to highlight, is the report on internal control and compliance. And there's three controlled deficiencies identified in the schedule of findings that starts on page 74 within the audited financial statements. And these are the three same issues that were discussed in the 2018 audit, and they're in the process of being corrected. So they're repeated here with some slight modifications. The first one being control over financial reporting, basically reducing the number of adjustments during the audit process. There were still turnover issues. Closing process for fiscal year 18 was done mostly by the finance director. This year, for part of the audit period, there was a senior accountant position, I believe it was filled in maybe the fall of 2019, and then was vacated in January of 2020. So there are still some turnover in personnel issues that contributed to the number of adjustments. Also, shortage of qualified staff. The city, at this point, the finance director is the one that really has the skill and knowledge to assist in closing of the books, but she has other duties as well, so making it difficult for her to focus her time on getting the books closed. So recommendations in that area include not only just staffing, but developing a comprehensive year-end closing procedure list to walk through to make sure that areas needing adjustments are identified. And also timely account reconciliations be completed during the year to minimize the load, workload at the end of the year. Next slide. The other area identified as a finding is related to capital assets. And there was a lot of cleanup done with the capital asset list as part of the city's preparation for the fiscal year 19 audit. So there's just some remaining issues with the value assigned to capital assets, as an example. There were properties that were acquired from the redevelopment agency that are reflecting zero values on the city's books, but they needed to be recorded at their fair value. And there are some other areas as well. The city's general ledger, for example, shows land owned of 4.5 million, but those individual parcels and land owned is not appearing on the listing. So it's not clear which land makes up the 4.5 million. And then the third item that we have in the, as a finding, is the payroll processing duties. The senior accountant at the time, which is now the finance director, was performing all of the payroll duties, including inputting new employees, processing payroll, recording the payroll in the general ledger. So overall, in the payroll processing duties, there was a lack of segregation of duties. So our recommendation there is that some of the inputs be reviewed. As long as there's only one person that's handling all those duties, there needs to be some type of a review function that's performed. Next slide. This year's audit also included compliance with the federal grant requirements. The city spent 1.3 million of federal grant funds during fiscal year 19. Most of that, or about 879,000 of it, was for the CDBG grant that was used for street improvement projects. As a result of testing that program, there was one compliance finding noted having to do with establishing a citizen participation plan as one of the requirements of the grant that the city needs to put in place as required by HUD. Next slide. Another document in your package is the management letter, and this contains other areas that we recommend for improvement that are not considered controlled efficiencies, but wanted to bring to your attention. As I indicated earlier, the, because the 18 audit wasn't completed in summer, yes?
Just for the, just to be clear on the previous slide on the CDBG, your finding was that you didn't find any evidence that, that there was no citizen participation? Or did you find that there just wasn't any? I mean, you just didn't find evidence that there was actually citizen participation on that process?
Yeah, there needs to, yeah, the city just needs to have a citizen participation plan. That's not to say that you didn't involve citizens in the planning, but there has to be a documented plan in place.
Okay, thank you for that.
So as I indicated, the, since the 18 audit wasn't completed until the summer of 19, findings on this list, there wasn't sufficient time to resolve those. So I've identified those that are carryover recommendations and a few new recommendations. One of the carryover recommendations is ensuring that financial information is provided to the council, such as budget to actual variance information and quarterly cash and investment reports that are required by state law. We're also recommending that the city restrict access to the signature stamp and any checks that have not yet been deposited should be kept in a locked file cabinet, so it doesn't, it is not accessible by anyone other than authorized employees. Next slide. We're also had recommended controls over keys and access to departments so that only employees needing access to their departments have that access and ensure that, you know, keys are not widely distributed and control is maintained of access to sensitive documents such as personnel files, that those be locked and not be accessible to anybody. We're also recommending that the city develop written procedures to cover all areas of accounting. We're also recommending the risk assessment process is referring to financial reporting risks. And a recommendation there is that there be a discussion at least annually among staff, management, and the council of areas where there may be risks of fraud and errors within the, within the city. Another recommendation is developing a fraud prevention and whistleblower policy. Also recommending that bank reconciliations be prepared and reviewed on a timely basis each month. Next slide. Also recommending reconciliation of capital asset and utility billing records to the general ledger, that that be done throughout the year rather than just at year end. And capital assets, we have various areas that we recommended improvements in that area. The third party utility billing oversight is in relation to the sewer billings that are done by a third party and recommending more oversight as far as what accounts they're writing off and their collection procedures. Another recommendation is ensuring that all invoices are, have department head approval and authorization prior to them being paid. And then also the fact that there's a single cash drawer and employees also have access to the cash drawer and the billing system creates an internal control issue. Next slide. And then the one remaining comment from last year that carried over is the, in relation to the payables listing, including items that have already been paid. The next three items are new recommendations that came up in the 2019 audit. One of them is, there is a discrepancy between the actual cash on hand versus the cash balances that are being reported in each fund. And the funds are showing a higher cash balance than actually is held in the pooled cash bank account. So as part of the monthly reconciliation process, the city needs to ensure that those two records are in agreement. It turns out it may just be a kind of a system issue, but this is something that should be looked at as part of the monthly bank reconciliation. The second item is related to budget amounts. We noted a couple of projects that were approved by city council after the budget was prepared, but those budget amounts were not reflected in the accounting system. So one of the reasons why, if you look on page 22 of the financial statements, it shows that expenses exceeded the budget, they were actually approved by the council, they were just not reflected within the accounting system. So they give the appearance that there was overspending done. So we're just recommending that any projects that are approved by council, that that budget amendment be reflected within the accounting system. The last item is, the city had difficulties in generating an accounts payable listing, which is the amount of outstanding payables at the end of June. I think this is an area that the city needs to work with its software company to determine how a list can be produced that supports the balance that's in the general ledger. So that concludes my presentation unless there's any further questions.
Questions from council members? Council from Vice Mayor Bartikowoli or Councilmember Simmons? Vice Mayor Bartikowoli, you'd like to go first if you have a comment?
Yes, questioning on the $50,000 discrepancy pooled cash versus cash. Is that, when you say discrepancy, is that a positive or a negative? Discrepancy means something, whether it's a positive or a negative discrepancy. Can you explain that possibly?
Yes, so it, I guess from the viewpoint that I'm looking at it, it's a negative variance because what, when you look at the, each of the city's funds and the amount of cash that it's showing, that number is $50,000 higher than what the, the bank balances are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
See if I can get this thing working. I have a question. You talked about numerous times in here about adjustments to, what are you adjusting and how, what, what is the adjustment you're talking about? I tried to, earlier when you were doing that and I couldn't get in, so.
Okay, so what that is, is the, the city provides us with their general ledger that, that we audit. And if we notice any transaction that's not accounted for correctly or in the right time period, then we will propose to the city, or will point out, in a number of the situations, we pointed out discrepancies. The city researched them further and discovered that some of the numbers needed to be changed from what were originally in the general ledger that was provided to us for the audit.
So if we had 103 adjustments in 17 and 18 and we reduced it down to 82 adjustments, does that mean there were discrepancies in the, your report versus what the city reported?
Well, the city, well, what, I should say, what the city originally provided to us versus the numbers that ended up with in the audit report. To get to that point, there were 82 adjustments to, or changes to the numbers.
What constitutes an adjustment to satisfy this? Does it have to balance?
Well, it's not really an issue of balancing. It's really just an issue of, the numbers need to comply with basically the accounting rules in order for us to be able to issue a clean opinion on the financial statements. So these adjustments that are made are to bring the accounting records in compliance with the accounting rules. And part of that could just be timing and how certain transactions are required to be recorded by the accounting rules.
Got it. Okay, and the last, last question I'd like to ask. On these management letters that you put control over, like, exactly, excuse me, specifically control over keys and access to departments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are these classified as discrepancies that require a response or an answer back as a corrective action?
Yeah, we, so we do follow up on these each year to determine how they were resolved. So they remain in our letter until we're comfortable that they've been resolved. It's up to the council members if they want to ask for a formal corrective action plan or response from management. Oftentimes, I do see that, that there's an actual response that's prepared to the letter, but it's not required from our standpoint.
Well, I'm just thinking from a management point of view, some of these are pretty serious recommendations. And I'm just curious as to how, how we should, as a council, instruct staff to respond to these. Should we put them in a form of a corrective action list and have responses as to what the corrective action was? From your point of view?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to, especially because they're, they're repeat items, but I think it's a good idea to, to have some input from management as to how they're, how they're working to resolve these items.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ingrid. I appreciate your report. My question is for staff about do we have a plan? Already have we started planning about how we're going to address some of these items in the management letter?
So, correct, we do. So with hiring the senior accountant, we have already started implementing, like, the segregation duties for payroll. We already have that separated out where the senior accountant is the one who's preparing payroll, and I'm reviewing it when it comes to paying the bills or actually new employees coming in. The accountant is the person who's doing those, who's inputting it. The senior accountant is now reviewing to make sure that they're in, and then I'm doing the oh hi overall. I'm reporting to make sure, like, CalPERS is correctly reporting. So now we have all the people in place for that one, in instance, that we've already have that one resolved. When it comes to the $50,000, what we found is it actually is a software error in inputting that stems back to pretty much when we started using the new system. So we've been working with Tyler and trying to find out how to specifically resolve that problem because it's one of those that compounds, if you enter in an incorrect account number from 1617 and put it into just the general fund and not into pooled cash, as she was referring to, it's compounded. So we're working on trying, with the software company, of trying to identify how we can correct those entries. I will say on the bank reconciliations, we do them. We now are on a monthly reconciliation. It was taken us every two or three months, we were getting to them. But we still were balancing our books to the bank account, but it wasn't balancing to the pooled cash. So that is a little bit of a software internal glitch that we are working on. When it comes to year-end protocols, I already have our senior accountant starting to work on that process. We are starting a year-end checklist, a monthly checklist, a quarterly checklist that we're going to be going through. And we've pretty much identified what most of our audited entries need to look like. So before we even start the audit, we will have our accruals done. We should have most of our testing done on our accounts payable, accounts receivable, and have pretty much almost all of those prepared beforehand. Same with the fixed assets and depreciation. We're going to work on them, doing them on a monthly basis and inputting them into the system as needed and making sure that we reconcile it before the audit. What was happening is a lot of these items we were dealing with after the audit started, such as fixed assets, we hadn't looked at them. So a lot of the entries are due to the fact that as we were reviewing them, we were finding out, okay, our depreciation didn't match the auditors, or this, this asset was retired, but we didn't remove it off the list. Those are all part of the adjustments that are being done as part of the cleanup process. So we are still working on a comprehensive list, but we are working on cutting those over in half or at least have all of our adjustments in line of how to actually proceed for when the next audit. The fact that we are fully staffed is going to help greatly. We've been working on a two-person staff for quite a few years. The fact that we actually have an accountant, a senior accountant and a finance director will is also going to help because now we have the staffing where I can be working on the budget. And I now have a senior accountant who can be working on the year-end process and closing the books so that not one person's trying to do that, so we can have those duties done and assigned prior to those events.
And then I know some of the items were security items as far as having access to cash box, having access to the stamp, having access to the offices and those kinds of things. I know Marty had mentioned before that we are aware of that, but, so I know that those are things that we need to address. Have you talked about that at all?
A little bit internally, but we're still working on, on resolving that. We're pretty much, we've taken this list now and going through, and I will be working more with Marty. COVID kind of hit a little bit hard for this. By the time we got a lot of these recommendations that we'd be working on, a lot of our attention's been towards COVID. So now I'm working with our senior accountant who's helping us prepare most of these. So now I'm working with our senior accountant who's helping us prepare most of these, and then I will be working with Marty and management now that you have seen the letters on what we can improve in the next three months, prior to the next audit actually starting. Part of this too is we will be starting the audit in, I can't remember, August, September, instead of later, so that we can plan on trying to have the audit done by December of this year on a more timely basis. And then we won't have these compounding issues that are happening from year to year, because we already have the time to actually resolve them. And if once we're back on a, a real schedule with an audit, there won't be as many findings, because we'll be on top of maintaining the books.
Right, so next year's audit findings should be way reduced, just because of that?
There still will be some, because the fact is, we have three months left to correct some of these actions, and there is some that's going to require a lot more research, like when we were, Wininger was referring to the assets. Part of it is, City Hall is on the books, I think, I think it's 1.3 million or something, it stems back to 1939. We're going to have to do some research to find out what was the actual value of City Hall, not what all the improvements. So there is some historical data that we're going to have to research, that's going to take some time to be able to do. So those are obviously not as important as making sure that the pooled cash issue is fixed or the security is, or making sure that we're getting all of our reporting done on a monthly basis. So there still will be some findings as we, as we clean up the most important audit issues. So part of it with us is figuring out what is a priority list, because we know we're not going to be able to tackle all of this at once, we're going to have to create priority. This is what we can tackle, this is what we can tackle, and obviously the ones that are more compliance issues, we tackle first, and then the ones, the, I want to say low-line fluke, they're all important, but the ones that aren't necessarily as important, we'll have to probably tackle in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, thank you very much. Marty's waiting to say something, too.
Here's a chair though, before Marty gets on there. Mayor? Mayor?
Yes?
I was just going to say, you know, personally, I'm not really concerned on how you do it. I'm concerned about getting it done, and I'd like to have this as be a form of a, a process by which each one of those provided back to the council exactly what action was taken, not in a book, just a sentence corrected by doing such and such, such and such. This doesn't do any good for you stand up and tell us what you're going to do. I want to know how you corrected these discrepancies. I hate to be autocratic about it, but that's how I personally feel, and I think I need to be truthful. These are some major issues, and I know you're going to work diligently like you always do, you work your head off to do this, but I want a plan, and I'd like to have a receipt, I mean, a corrective action of what exactly you did on each one of these things. You've got the staff now, there's no reason why you can't do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons, that's exactly what I was going to say. We'll bring back a report in the first quarter of the fiscal year on what we've accomplished so far, what's remaining on the list, and the timeline and schedule for doing that.
Well, I, I guess I want to kind of tie to what you're saying, Mr. Simmons, if you allow me, or if you want to...
Please, I, I relinquish my time.
Thank you. I, for some reason, I'm having a deja vu about the last time you made the report about the audit that we had, and maybe you, maybe the list from the previous year was a lot longer, and maybe you've done a lot of things, so maybe in your list that you put together, you include from the previous, they're not called findings, but recommendations from, from an auditor. I imagine that, that list now is shorter, hopefully, so I'd like to see what has been done, because I imagine last year's was a lot longer, so give yourself some credit on the work that you've done as well. And then because it's a previous list, and we want to, I think it's, it's important to put that list also and emphasize the priorities of it. So give yourself some credit for the work you've done, because there was recommendations from the previous year, and we did kind of talk about what are the things that you guys are working on, and you guys kind of described some of the things. But I think, I think, along with Mr. Simmons, I think we really are expecting that in the next few months, we actually see the plan and start checking it off as we move forward, and we would appreciate that. But give yourself some credit for the things that you've worked on already, right? Because I, I think there's some recommenda- I don't want to bring the recommendations from last year and compare them this year, but there's probably something that you've worked on already.
There is several, yes.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor, do you have anything? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate, I agree with, with you and with Councilman Simmons. I think we just want to see a prioritized list and then see how far we can get down that list each year. And I, I don't think it needs to be necessarily a monthly, but at least a quarterly of, you know, where we're, where we're getting on that list.
I had one, one question to our auditor. Do, I think, I think you mentioned that you're, you're recommending that there's some written procedures on, a kind of day-to-day things, like, like segregating duties, is, is that what you said? I'm sorry.
Yes, I think, I think it would help in the long run to have written procedures, especially if there is turnover or new staff in certain positions, to have written, written duties or really detailed procedures, just to ensure continuity from year to year and hopefully in the long run minimize the number of adjustments made during the audit process.
Thank you. So you didn't find any, any procedures that we currently have?
Well, I think there, I think there are more like policies, maybe not detailed procedures, but there are policies that, that are in place, but just not detailed procedures.
Okay. So I guess I suggest that in addition to, to adding procedures, as if you're full staff, what happens when you're not fully staff? How do you assure you continue segregating duties, so then you don't hire or enter hiring information and then also pay those folks as well? I think those things are important, just to segregate for, for multiple reasons. But I, and, but more importantly, just so the public knows that, you know, we're doing things in, in the right way. So, so when there isn't enough staff, how do we deal with some of those situations? And I think those need to be added to the procedures as well.
Okay. Part of that, too, is we are doing more cross-training. In the past, we hadn't had the staffing for it, unfortunately, so now...
I, I get that, I guess, I mean, I mean, there's always reasons for things, I guess, but if you write them down in a procedure, then you can go back and kind of figure out, okay, I'm by myself, how do I make sure that the payroll happens in a way that is, meets, you know, you know, whatever the auditor is looking for to assure that you're doing it correctly in a way that it meets their, their, their needs. I'm not an accountant, and I don't even play one on TV either.
Got it.
Thank you. Any further questions from the public, I mean, from the council? Otherwise, I'll, I'll open it up to the public if there's any comments.
At this time, Mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you. With that, if there are no further comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the City of Marysville Audit of Financial Statements and Supplemental Information for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019, as presented by our auditor, Richard and Company, LLP.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hudson.
Second.
Second by Ms. McKenzie. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Batakevoly?
Aye.
And Mayor Samayoa?
Aye.
Motion's approved, the vote of 5-0. Thank you so much for your presentation and taking our, for taking our questions.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
There's no item eight. We'll move to public hearings. Item nine is to vacate Elm Street between Second and Third Street. The recommendation is to pass a motion to, one, hold a public hearing and accept public comments, and, two, adopt resolution to vacate the portions of Elm Street between Second and Third Streets in Marysville. I'd like to entertain a motion. Well, this comes from our community development director, Mr. Wright. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, virtual councilmembers. So this is a follow-up from the March 17 meeting, where the City Council adopted a resolution of intent for the Frank M. Booth request that the city vacate Elm Street between Second and Third Street in order to better facilitate circulation, logistics, and safety for the Frank M. Booth Manufacturing Facility in Marysville. Elm Street currently bifurcates the facility, making internal circulation and maneuvering difficult. In addition, this section of Elm Street, which is rarely used by vehicles, is a source of concern for Booth's operation, as it provides access to the backside of their warehouse, which encourages both criminal and transient activity. This portion of the street to be vacated was posted in accordance with state law, and appropriate notice was provided. Tonight is the required hearing in which the public is, is encouraged to provide comment. On the proposed vacation, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution vacating the portion of Elm Street. I also want to note on the resolution itself, there are a number of reservations, both for PG&E, public utilities, as well as the fire district. So this concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Questions?
Jer, when you say there's reservations by those entities, can you share what some of those might be?
Easements or, yeah, because some of the, the roadway there actually contains utilities, so it reserves them so they can come on-site to do maintenance, repair, so forth.
Thank you.
Questions from Councilmember, Vice Mayor Batakevoly?
No questions.
Councilmember Simmons?
No questions.
Questions from Ms. McKenzie? No? Okay. Seeing no questions from the board, I'd like to, are you asking me to entertain a motion to hold a public hearing? I'll entertain a, a motion to hold a public hearing and accept public comments. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
There a motion?
Second.
Motion and second by Simmons. Motion was made by Hudson, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion's approved. Any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
That will close public comment. Now I'd like to entertain a, a motion to adopt resolution to vacate the portion of Elm Street between Second and Third Streets in Marysville.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
There's a motion by Hudson, second by Simmons. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Batakevoly?
Aye.
And Mayor Samayoa?
Aye. Motion's approved, the vote of 5-0. Thank you, sir, thank you for your work.
Any committee reports?
None at this time, Mayor.
Ms. Brown, is there a city manager's report?
Yes, very quickly and briefly, I just wanted to mention that I think the last few days, especially when this agenda was released, there's a little confusion about the general plan progress report and housing element report that was on the consent calendar earlier this evening versus literally working on updating the general plan. So I just wanted to clarify that the comprehensive general plan update has also been put on hold because of some of the funding that's really needed in order to move forward, which is why at the mid-year budget, I had asked the council if we could move that money towards the medical arts specific plan, as you saw from earlier this evening. I'm not being, until we see how things continue to move forward in terms of the economy with COVID-19 situation, and then hopefully be able to return and revisit that. The general plan progress report that was on the consent calendar this evening has nothing to do with the comprehensive update that was proposed in last year's budget. That's just to update the state, it's our state requirement on our progress on implementing the city's 34-year-old general plan and its housing element, so.
How many years?
34 years.
She likes to say that.
Sorry. That's it, thank you.
Okay, let's go around. I'm going to leave Councilmember McKenzie for last. She's going to, I reserve her time to, she wants to offer a prayer during this time. So I'll start with Councilmember Hudson.
Yeah, I got a lot to say, I'm just going to keep it short. As many of you know, I'm not super stoked with the way that our leadership is going for our local government here in the community and so forth. The way we're handling things is not my preference, but it helped me realize through some reflection that a lot of decisions would be made by people that have never actually had to make life-or-death decisions before. And that goes all the way to our state government, to our federal government, and so forth. And it's unfortunate that we're here and we're at that spot. It's unfortunate also that as we go forward, you can't make everybody happy, and right now that's me, and I just don't like the fact that I am having to potentially give up my liberties for people's securities. And, yeah, special America, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. I'd like to commend our, our Yuba County Health Officer for what, her boldness in taking care of some of these violations and separation and staying-at-home issues. As you well know, the, she's closed down the fishing as a, as a commercial business. It's no longer classified in the report as a business, and so no longer will we have guide services on the, on the Yuba Sutter area, and I'm hearing that it's going to be statewide. The, carrying on this virus by socialization and playing basketball, et cetera, et cetera, is just phenomenal to me. I cannot believe it, and I'm sure my colleagues sitting on the city council feel the same way. I know there's probably some inequities, but the thing is, we need to persevere, we need to stay home. Stay home. You have no reason to go downtown unless you need to go to the doctor, and on and on and on. So please, please, carry the message, stay home. Don't infect other people, don't infect the next-door neighbor, don't go visiting, don't go play basketball, don't have a party in your backyard. Obey the rules and we'll get through this, but if we don't obey the rules, the devastation's going to be horrible. So I'm off my soapbox now, but please, 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 pay attention to what the pros are saying, the doctors are saying. In the next two weeks, it's going to be very critical for our, our little community here. So stay home, be safe, and take care of your family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Batakevoly?
I just want to say, I know it's tough times, we'll get through this. I, I appreciated, appreciated everybody's reports tonight, and I particularly want to thank Marty for clarifying the master plan progress report. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, I want to start something totally not related to the COVID-19. It just, just kind of, we like to think we'll continue moving forward, that, you know, our public works and, and will continue working. So it was great to see the lights being turned on at, at Ellis Lake. I know that Vice Mayor was pretty excited to see the lights turn back on, on Ellis Lake, because I know he's been working on it for, for a number of years, and it's exciting to see it actually happening and on a daily basis. That fountain's going, which is not only, it's very attractive and beautiful, but it's actually helping with the health of our lake, and so that's, that's, that's a positive. Another positive thing that I want to kind of share is the California Transportation Commission approved the gap funding needed for the, the last section of the five-lane project, the safety project along Highway 70 between Marysville and Orville. So that safety project will allow people to travel safe once that's completed, and have five lanes to travel from Marysville all the way down to Orville, which would be a great benefit to everyone. At the same time, Caltrans is already putting... At the same time, Caltrans is already putting out for review and public input the project that's happening on, along Highway 70 within Marysville. And so it's important for all of you to at least take a look at some of the plans that they put out. Unfortunately, the public input time was kind of taken away from the public, and it's more an online input. So I know they're looking for input for, for those projects and the different, how's it going to look? Part is going to include replacing the trussel that we continue having issues with. Probably it seemed like twice last week where the trussel was hit and we had to kind of reroute traffic and also affected for a couple of days afterwards because there were some engineering that had to be done, or I don't know, or more, whatever Caltrans needed to do, or Union Pacific needed to do, and more traffic went around our town. So in any case, hopefully in the next three or four years, that's going to be replaced, and that whole problem will be removed in the long term. So anyway, so that's good to look forward, but I know that Caltrans is looking forward to working with our staff and our leadership in the council and finding ways that we can reduce some of the congestion that happens in Marysville among the two highways, the Highway 70, Highway 20. So I know they're looking forward and working with us, and they, they kind of share some of the initial plans. There's going to be costs associated with those plans, finding the funding for those plans. It'll be important for us to be supportive of, of Caltrans efforts to try to find some dollars, whether it's through SECOC dollars or some other transportation dollars to make those improvements happen so then we can improve not only in circulation to move folks, you know, they're going to Sacramento or Roseville, wherever it may be, but also that would get people to our local commercial streets a lot easier so they can do their business within Marysville. We are in a bit of a unique situation and a crisis in many ways throughout the world. I'm probably looking at too much information too often and looking at worldwide numbers and by country and by state, and it's probably, I shouldn't do that, but I don't know, I just, I want to look at how things are moving along, and I think the state is doing the right things. I think the governor is doing the right things. I understand for our small businesses, and many of them are, are suffering right now. And the hope is that we can get a lot of the minutia or a lot of the red tape out there to support our local businesses so they can not only, if they can't continue providing services, and now that, once this is over, we'll be able to get those small businesses going as soon as possible with hopefully the least harm to them. So I know that Jonathan is working really hard to assuring that he's looking for those resources available for our local businesses, he's making those connections. So I appreciate the work that you're doing, working with the chamber and working with state and federal resources to kind of find those, those means to help our local businesses. Because I don't, I don't know what it is to, you know, to put all, you know, put my money into a business and, and look at all that investment and all that hard work possibly go away. So I, I empathize, and I try to put myself in your situation, Brad, and so we're all rooting for our local businesses to make sure that after this thing is over, you guys can get going as fast as possible. And I know the city and Jonathan, I know you guys are working hard and trying to see how that looks and trying to find those resources for them. Let's, let's pray for our law enforcement, our public safety officers, and our fire department, folks and personnel, even public workers who have to go to these emergency calls. Let's help them, hope they stay safe and healthy, and their families stay healthy as well. For our nurses and our doctors who are in this battle right now, and let's, let's pray for those folks. Even for our grocery store folks who have to, you know, maybe they don't want to be there, but they have to be there because that's how they pay their bills. So let's also think of them as well. With that, Councilmember McKenzie's asked if she'd like to do a prayer. We're in a holy week for, for many of us. Easter's coming, Passover is coming, starting tomorrow, so if the public doesn't mind, I'd like to ask Ms. McKenzie to lead us on a prayer.
I will. I'd love to do that. And first, I want to just give a comment about, there's available, if people in the city or in the county, both counties, there is a task force forum to provide food relief for anybody, seniors or anybody who's in need of food and help getting food, and that number is 645-2003. And that hotline is available seven days a week from nine to five, and they will get you connected with, help with food. So let's pray. Father God, we just acknowledge you as God. We acknowledge you as a place where we could go to when we need help. And so as city leaders, we just come to you right now for help in making decisions that are wise and good during this emergency situation. Father, we pray a blessing over our city. We pray a blessing over every home, and just like you did in Egypt when the deaf angel passed over every home that you had marked. We pray that you would mark every home and every business, every place that people are that this virus would pass over and not harm any more people. God, we just pray for provision for every household, that they would have everything they need, all the food, all the cash they need, and the same with the businesses. We pray that you would preserve the business community here, that they would be able to survive this trauma, this, this crisis that's happened unexpectedly. Father, I pray that you would just give us grace to be patient and understanding and kind and thoughtful during this time. We pray that every heart would be at peace, that fear would not be ruling our city, but peace and joy would be ruling our city, and we would continue to hope for good things and be able to look at the positive. So God bless us and help us through this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn to our next regular meeting.